You're watching Brockton Community Access. Mark Lindy, your host, and tonight we have candidates for Ward Three City Council on Brockton Community Access's coverage of the City of Brockton preliminary election on September 19th. I have in studio with me on my panel, I have Steve Foot, the former chairman of the Brockton Democratic City Committee, who is now an unenrolled independent voter. And we have Councilor Shayna Barnes, who is a member of the Democratic City Committee, and aide to Congressman Lynch, as well as being a outgoing city councilor at large. In studio for the candidates that are running, we have Reverend Marlon Green, who is running for a second time for Ward Three. We have current city councillor Dennis Anieri, who is running for his, I'm going to say, 12? It's 12 years?
It will be for...
For the 14.
He'll be my eighth term, which will give me 16.
Eighth term. Okay. And we have Tina Cardoso, who's new to the political scene in Brockton. So what we're going to do is we're going to start with opening statements, and we did a really scientific drawing out of a baseball helmet. And the first person that drew for the one-minute opening statement is Reverend Marlon Green. Reverend Green.
Mark, thank you, and thank you to BCA for the service that you provide to our wonderful community. My name is Reverend Marlon Green. I'm a 15-year resident of the City of Brockton. I am a minister. I've been a minister, serving several communities for the past 15 years. I've lived in Brockton with my wife and our two boys, who are students in the Brockton Public Schools. I bring to this campaign over 15 years of community service as a clergy member, and serving in several different communities throughout New England. I also bring to this campaign over 15 years of professional research experience in the healthcare industry. And I'm very honored to be a candidate for city council to represent our great ward, Ward Three. Brockton is our city, and it is also our home. And I'm hoping, in this race, to be able to represent your interests, your voice, and to make Brockton our great home again.
Okay. Councilor Anieri.
Thank you, Mark, and I want to thank the staff at BCA for hosting this evening. I totally appreciate it. As always, they do an outstanding job, and they need to be commended. If it wasn't for them, some of the news stories that happen here in the great city of Brockton would never be heard, so I do appreciate that. And good evening. My name is Dennis Anieri. I am the present city councillor from Ward Three, and I have served in that capacity for the last 14 years. I don't think I'm a stranger to the community at all, having lived here my entire life, 63 years' worth. Born here in August of 1954, lived and was raised in Ward Three for several years before I moved to the east side of Brockton, and then came back to Ward Three just about 15, 16 years ago. And I ran for the open seat of city council from Ward Three, and I took Jerry Cassidy's place when he stepped down as the president of city council of Ward Three at that point in time. So it's a great honor for me to be here. It's always a great pleasure to have competition. I do not stray away from competition. It's always healthy. But I just want to let you know that I am a candidate for reelection, and hopefully I'll be reelected to serve the people of Ward Three, as I've done for the past 14 years. Thank you.
Okay. And Tina.
Hi, my name is Tina Cardoso. I am also a 15-year resident of Brockton. Thank you, Mark Lindy, and Brockton Community Access for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here with the sitting council and Marlon Green. This is all new to me, like you said, Mark. I'm new to the political scene, but what's not new to me is my community service, my experience in the community. I'm a nurse 20 years now, having worked in underserved communities. And I'm also a president of a nonprofit organization that seeks to help folks in a community around mental illness, youth violence, drug addiction. So I bring in a lot of that experience, that connection with the community, that ability to, you know, folks can relate to me. And I'm hoping to be able to make a difference in the city. Brockton's already a great city. I feel like more folks like myself need to be involved. And the demographics also has changed a lot, so I bring in some of that connection, that relationship. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. I want to thank you also for putting your name on the ballot, as someone that's done that myself. It takes a lot away from your family and your friends and your life in general, but service is a wonderful thing. We'll start off with the questions. Steve would be first.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Now that regulated use of marijuana is legal, and the only pot facility in Brockton is on West Chestnut Street in your ward, another facility wants to open a couple of doors down from them, and the current facility wants to expand its hours. Would you vote for more licenses for retail pot sales, and do any of you use marijuana or any other drugs?
Okay, we're going to start with Marlon. Reverend Green.
So I'll start with the latter question first. Have I ever used marijuana? And the answer is no, I've never used it. To your first question on whether I would vote to expand or to grant additional licenses to marijuana facilities in the other city, and the simple answer is no, I would not. And my reason for that is I think we already have enough challenges in the City of Brockton with illegal drugs and crimes of different sort. This is just not the community. It is not the place for that type of business. And with the other struggles that we're having with managing the criminal activity that we have in Brockton, such a facility just would not aid in us. I'm getting that under control. So again, I would not vote to expand that in Brockton.
Tina?
So I would not vote to, as a nurse and someone who knows the challenges of drug addiction firsthand, I've worked with that population for nearly 20 years. I would not vote to expand the marijuana. And no, I have never used marijuana. I prefer my red wine.
There we go.
But, no, I definitely would not vote to expand marijuana facilities.
Okay, councillor.
Well, thank you, and I guess I'm with Tina on that. I never used marijuana either, and I enjoy my red wine, too. But in any case, if you recall, medical marijuana was voted by the voters of the City of Brockton by 76 percent, unanimously 76 percent of the voters of the City of Brockton, 78 percent of the voters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's how we ended up with medical marijuana coming into some of our cities and towns. It was also indicated that every city and town in certain areas would have a medical marijuana facility. Plymouth County was going to have five, Brockton was going to have two. And what we did at that particular time, and I was a part of the process, because they were looking for a business district area to where we would locate the medical marijuana, we came up with the overlay district, which was what you see on West Chestnut Street. And as you know, we have one facility that's been up and operating since its time, it's three years. And we just approved, or I shouldn't say "we," it just went through zoning that there's also approval for another location at another corner. And I already indicated, as the councillor from Ward Three, there is no more room for an expansion. If there's an expansion, we have to look somewhere else. So as far as I'm concerned, we have what we need in the City of Brockton right now for medical marijuana.
And that goes for the small shops that would sell recreational?
That's going to be a different issue altogether, Steve. That's going to be a different type of discussion of how that's going to work. We don't know how that's going to come at us yet. The state hasn't finished writing all and how it's going to be. They passed different steps to it, but we don't know how it's going to affect us out here in Brockton and how it could. I can't have an answer that the gentleman that's in place could want to expand that, but that, I don't know how that's going to fit in yet.
Fair enough.
Did either one, you want to add to that second part of the question? Okay. So we will go to Shayna.
Thank you, Shayna.
We'll start the first question in the order. It will be Dennis, then Marlon.
Oh, this is a group question, actually, first.
Oh, this is a, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, wasn't sure.
In your campaign, and, you know, as a veteran retiring campaigner myself, you go out, knock doors, make phone calls, answer phone calls, get emails, make emails, making contact with your constituents and the people that you're looking to serve. What has been one or two major, major issues of the residents of Ward Three that have come across your ears or to you through this particular campaign cycle?
First would be councillor Ian Anieri.
I'm first?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Shayna, for asking that question. And I guess, one who's been campaigning for a good, good many years, and campaigns change over the years as well, but you pretty much stick to the same type of strategy, though a little different now over the years, where you have social media, so it does allow you to do some other things that you couldn't do before. But right now, as the city councillor, who is out in the neighborhoods, and I travel the neighborhoods, and, you know, I hold ward meetings, so I get a lot of feedback when I hold my ward meetings as well. Right now, as I've gone through the neighborhoods and starting, you know, the process of campaigning for September 19th, the biggest concern that a lot of people have right now, not enough police protection in the neighborhoods. We're not doing enough work in our neighborhoods. I've had people even say to me, aren't we worrying a little bit too much still with, you know, the new downtown and forgetting about our neighborhoods? And they're right. We're not. And, you know, we need more police officers in our neighborhoods. They want to see more police patrols. They want to see people riding through, not just walking through. So that's the biggest concern that I have, getting back to me. Public safety, number-one big concern that's coming back to me.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Marlon.
So in knocking door to door, which I've done quite a bit, along with the usage of social media, and the number-one concern that I'm hearing from residents in Ward Three is a public safety issue. So the level of crime that we have in the city, and also traffic, and the safety on our streets. And over the past several weeks, we've had several incidents of cars running into homes and some pretty serious accidents on our streets with drivers just speeding down the other roadways. And so that's a huge concern for many of our moms and dads, where their children are concerned. So the level of crime and traffic speed on the other roads is one of the other top things that I'm hearing. The second thing that I'm hearing from a lot of the residents in Ward Three is really about representation. You know, we have a city, we have elected officials, and there are many residents in Ward Three and also around the city who are just concerned about not having enough representation in city government.
Okay, Tina?
So public safety is a big concern, of course, given the recent spike, you know, in violence in the city. When I go out and knock on doors, people are concerned. The other issue is, similar to what Marlon said, is the representation in some of the precincts. And folks basically not, they don't know much about their city council and what their city council is doing for them. So that feeling of needing to be represented. The demographics, like I said, in Brockton have changed tremendously. I raised my kids at Brockton High. They all graduated from there. And the kids at Brockton High now, with the large influx of more immigrant community, certainly has changed a lot. So the folks there need to be educated a bit more on, you know, who's representing them and what the issues are in the city.
Thank you. I have a follow-up to that. You're raising your hand, and my question was going to be, you're the current councillor, and representation was mentioned by both of your challengers, so I assume you may want to address that.
Definitely, thank you. I do want to follow up on that, because, you know, one of the things that I've tried to do since I've been a city councillor, and that's in the 14th year now, is I've always been available to have ward meetings. I have three, maybe four, sometimes a year. Maybe it might hit a year we only have the three, but, and my ward meetings have been pretty well-attended. When I say pretty well-attended, when you can get 25, 30, 50 people, 60 even, into school cafeteria, that shows good, you know, good people looking to come to find out what the issues are, and it shows that I'm doing my representative work. Now, not everybody knows me, not everybody knows all of us in every ward as well, but the key is with me, is I've always reached out, always had ward meetings, I've advertised them, it'll be radio, whether it be here, cable, whether it even be buying an ad in the newspaper, and I've always been able to, you know, to bring in other department heads to talk different issues that, you know, seem to be talked about or what their interests may be. So I've always done my part of reaching out to people, and I think the people know that. And, yeah, there's probably going to be a few that may not know me, but that's part of the process as well, too. So, thank you, I just want to clarify that.
Okay. And since you both wrote it up, I'll let you have another minute on the issue each. Tina?
So the problem with the people that come out to the ward meetings is the same people that come out to the ward meetings. So the people that really, really, that we need to be able to represent, the people that have language barriers, have difficulty getting to ward meetings, whether it's because they have some kind of disability or whatever, what have you, there has to be a way for us to be able to get out there and represent all of the folks in the ward, and not just have these meetings that the same people go to, you know. The people that I've talked to, they don't even know that the meetings exist.
Reverend Green?
Again, where I'm sharing the other feedback that I'm getting from our voters, and I think it's important that we pay close attention to what the other voters are saying. I understand, councillor Anieri, you have regular ward meetings, which I think is great, is needed, and should absolutely continue to happen. But frankly, I would not be satisfied with being in a ward of almost 8,000 registered voters. And I have a ward meeting with 25, 30, or 60 of those voters. I would use any means necessary to engage, to reach out to the families in our ward, and to get them to be a part of, and to reengage them in this democratic process. We need to hear from them and to be more informed about their concerns before we make decisions.
I'm going to continue this for a minute. I'm going to give you each 30 more seconds. Councillor.
Thank you. First of all, let's get one thing straight. Ward meetings are not mandated. Ward meetings are what the ward councillor wants to do. It's not something that you're told you have to do when you become a councillor. There are some ward councillors that do not have ward meetings because they feel that there's not a need to, unless there's a real appropriate issue that the ward is facing, and they want the people to know about it. Now, I reach out everywhere that I can, and I disagree with the fact. I always see, when I have my ward meetings, different people. I see you come many times, Reverend. I've never seen where Tina's come. Now, I mean, I'm not going to go that route, but I know that my ward meetings are attended from anywhere from 30 to 50 to 60, 70. You think you're going to get 200 people? You're not going to. You're not going to. I'm sorry to say that, but you're not going to.
Time, Reverend. 30 more seconds.
30 more seconds. So being in elected office is representational. It's about representing the voice of the constituency. And there is really no representation without engagement. And so we have to find a way to engage the constituency and to be more informed in terms of what their concerns and thoughts are on the issues in the other city. So again, I would use any means necessary to increase the number of voters at these ward meetings. I understand they're not mandatory, but they're helpful to engage those who are disengaged from the process.
Tina, 30 seconds.
Again, just, I would be more visible, more available. I'm someone that's approachable. I understand the issues because I've lived them. People can relate to me, and I feel like I would find ways to engage people other than just the ward meetings for a small number of folks.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next question, and that would be Steve.
You're, three of you are running for the Ward Three council seat, but most of the votes you take on the city council affect the city as a whole. If you're elected, would you vote to ignore federal law and make Brockton a sanctuary city?
Tina first.
I would have to look at, it's very complicated. It's a complex issue. There's a lot of emotion attached to that. We have to look at our population of people and our demographics, and we have to do what's best for our constituents. So listening to people, talking to people, going out to see what, you know, they want is important. To me, it's a very hot topic. There's a lot more. It's very complex, and I think that, you know, we really just need to listen to people and try to understand that Brockton is a very diverse city, and we want to not exclude anyone. We have hard-working people here, a lot of immigrants that come over, and they work hard and pay their taxes, so we really need to pay attention to what the people are saying.
Even if that means the loss of federal funding?
Again, we'd have to really look at it and talk to folks, and the people that live here are hard-working, tax-paying people, so we want to be able to include everyone, not exclude anyone.
How do you figure that tax, how do you figure that an illegal immigrant is a tax-paying person?
People are paying their taxes one way or another.
Unless they have a job illegally.
Mm-hmm. People are paying their taxes one way or another, and we're a city of immigrants, and we really have to take that into account when we make those decisions.
Okay, we're going to go a minute.
Okay, so you can't give it a yes or no right now? You wouldn't give it a yes or no?
I think I've answered the question to the best of my ability.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, I'm going to do a minute thirty. Dennis?
No. Why would I make Brockton a sanctioned city? And I've said that, I said that even when this whole discussion started several months ago. And as you know, the ordinance is before the ordinance committee, whether we hear it before the end of our legislative year, and I don't know if that'll happen at this point in time, I know. And no matter how you read it, write it, cross the T, dot the I, whatever, it would make Brockton a sanctioned city, and I am not going to let my city become a sanctioned city. I've lived here for 63 years of my life, and people came back at me when they heard about this, and they were very, very upset that this could even happen here in the City of Brockton. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere, I think it was in June, July, I thought the SJC made some type of a court ruling. I don't have it in front of me, but I thought something was made in regards to sanctioned city. So you got my answer, Steve? No.
Okay. Reverend Green?
Brockton is a very diverse city. There is no question about that. Immigrants are important to this country and to the City of Brockton as well. We love immigrants, and we should do everything within our ability to make sure that we protect the immigrant families that we have in the City of Brockton. And there are many different ways that we can do that. I certainly would not vote for a measure that would jeopardize the funding of the city. The last thing that we need is to lose another dollar in the City of Brockton. And so I would not put forth a measure, approve a measure, that would put us at jeopardy. But I think there are other ways that we can show our support to the other immigrant community, Mark. One thing that I would not support is, I would not support using our law enforcement officials to enforce federal laws.
Okay. Next question would be Shayna.
Yes. So, okay, well, it's the same question for the three of you, but I need to ask it differently for councillor Ian Anieri. So I guess I'm asking, what is one major accomplishment that you wish to execute if elected as city councillor, and what is one major accomplishment that you are particularly proud of in Ward Three?
So we will start with Marlon.
One major thing that I would hope to accomplish?
Yes.
As a councillor?
Yes.
I think one major thing I would like to work with the council of the city and the school department on is the funding formula for the other public school system in Brockton. This has been a longstanding fight for us, where our kids, our families, the city just isn't getting their shared of the funding from the other state. And so I would certainly love to work with the school committee and the city to have that formula revised, where we are no longer at a disadvantage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be Tina.
So I have many passions, so it's hard to pick one of them. Definitely, education is key. Not only educating our students, but educating our parents. Again, I go back to the changing demographics in the city. If we want a great city, we have to educate parents and have to teach them how to be more involved in the schools. We can't have great schools without great PTAs, without parents being involved. That's what I did with my children. That's what made them successful. They all three graduated from Brockton High, and they all went on to higher education because I was that parent that was involved. And so I feel like education is key, elementary, high school, also educating the parents, helping them to better their education so that they can get jobs and that they can contribute to the city. So that's one of my biggest...
So why not run for a school committee if education is your focus?
Because I feel like there's other passions that I have, like public safety and other things that I want to do, that would be best served on the council.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Thank you. There's so many things that could be said and given into this particular answer of some of my, you know, accomplishments, naturally, from my many years of being the city councillor of Ward Three. But I think the greatest accomplishment I had was just a few years back, that was under the Belzotti administration, when Mayor Belzotti, I, Mary Waldron, from the Economic Development Plan, she was involved with the Economic Development Plan back then, and we were able to be instrumental in bringing the Benati Auto Group to the City of Brockton, a big automobile dealership. Been many, many years since you saw a new dealership come into the City of Brockton, but it was going to take a piece of desolate land that had sat there for so long, was the American Brush Building, and it sat there, decayed, and it just, it had to go away. And the price was right for the Benati Group to come in and purchase it. It's there now still, but it's under a different name because of their process just went in a different direction. But that was, to me, it was important, because I was a part of that whole step with the mayor, and I knew what was going on from day one, and I was there right to the opening. So to me, that, you know, I was very proud of that moment, I cleaned that corner up. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next question is from Steve Foot.
This is a general question about the city. Why doesn't a city the size of Brockton have a movie theater complex? I mean, do you think we need one? And if so, what would you do as a councillor to try to get us one?
Okay, start with Tina.
So that's a great question. A lot of people ask that question, along with, why don't we have a nice lounge, or, you know, places with more activities for people to attract folks into the city? So people are concerned about these things, and I would work with the council. I'm not, you know, you know, I don't know the numbers, so I'd have to learn. Like I said, I'm not a politician, I'm a nurse. I'm someone that cares about the city. I'm a community activist, so there are things that I would have to learn about budgets and numbers. But I know that it's a huge concern for my children especially. They all grew up here and went to school here, but they left when they got their higher education, because there's not much for them to do in the city. So we need to be able to build, you know, attract our youth to keep them here in the city, so that they can give back and work here and contribute.
Thank you. Reverend Green?
So I think this is a question kind of in the larger context of economic development for the City of Brockton, and developing ways to attract businesses to the other city. I know there are a number of challenges that are important to economic development. Crime is one of those challenges, and getting the crime rate under control for the other city. And also, parking is certainly an issue for a lot of firms and businesses in looking to establish their business in the City of Brockton. I think we're on the right track in terms of economic development and the plans for downtown Brockton. I think if we continue along this path and leverage the other resources and the availability of space and buildings that we have in the other city, we can certainly move towards that, and we can see something like a movie theater, if that's the desire of the community, and if there's a partner who is willing to come in and to do that.
Councillor Ian Anieri?
You know, I think a part of that whole renewable economic development plan that's going on right now, you know, with Main Street, I think, has a movie theater coming, but still, we've gone a long, long time without having a movie theater in the city. We should be ashamed of ourselves. And I will tell you right now, there are some nice locations right down in the south end of the city, South Main Street, further down from where I work at the dealership. You've got some vacant spots down there, and I don't know why we haven't really done anything to try to create, you know, an aspect of putting a movie theater there, to be truthful with you. And you also have the Shaw's Building, that's been sitting there, closed now for, I don't know, eight years, which is sad, which is half in West Bridgewater, half in Brockton, and why we couldn't even get together... Brockton, and why we couldn't even get together with West Bridgewater and do something. It, it is too bad that the city of Brockton doesn't have a, have a movie theater. Be nice to have our own here, with the reclining chairs like they have in Randolph, I agree. And it is, people have mentioned that to me many, many times, and, and I don't know why we, why no one's picked up the plate with it, I really don't know.
Okay. Next question is Shayna Barnes.
Okay, this is a group question again. What are your feelings about term limits for city councillors?
Okay, that would be first, and councillor Ineri?
Shayna, I really haven't given that much thought. You know, you've stayed around for four years, and, and I've been 14 years, and going for 16 years. I don't know, do we really need to have term limits for city council? I, I don't know. I think what you might need to do, and would, would be nice to look at, is maybe making it so the terms were a little bit longer, you know, so you'd have a three for mayor, three for city council, three for school committee, because you're no sooner get elected, and you're no sooner just turn around and start to learn the process, and especially if you're brand-new, and you were brand-new, and a lot of the people that are running today, they don't know the process. It's more to what you know it is, and I'd rather see something more like that, you know, a three, three, and a three. I think that's what we should be working on, to be truthful with you, than just have a limitation, because sometimes the limitation, for whatever reason, just never gets voted into play, you know, and, as you know, one time the mayor's term was for four years, and that went back and forth, up and down, so many years, from two to four, two to four, but, I, I'd rather see it more, you know, in a three, three, and three for the elected officials.
Thank you.
Tina?
For me, it's not so much the term limits, for me, is holding folks accountable. So, we talk about all these things that we want to get done, but then nothing gets done, and we're still talking about the things that we want to get done, like we just talked about right now. So, holding folks accountable, I feel like more and more people are learning that that's what they need to do, to hold their people accountable. If you're not working for the people in your ward, then you have to go. So, that's, 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 to me, is just educating people to hold their city councils accountable for the things that are going on in the city. If you're not working for me, then I'm not gonna vote for you the next time. So, it's not so much term limits for me, it's more accountability.
That would be a term limit, people holding voters accountable?
Well, in a sense, but, you know what I mean, I just don't think that we should, you know, set a two-year limit, or a three-year limit. I think we need to do the work, and if we're not working, then, you know, folks need to get out there and, and vote, or not.
Reverend Green?
Thank you.
So, I'm indifferent where term limits are concerned. I, on, on one hand, I, I don't see an argument or a reason for term limit, to impose one, and at the same, on the other hand, you know, there could be reasons, but I'm, I, I'm indifferent, I do not have an argument to put forth to say that we need one in place. What I think is more important is, where the, the city council is concerned, is to have better checks and balances in place for the, the city council. So, I think that for the other council, we should have a stronger conflict of interest policy in place, disclosures. I know there are some questions about nepotism in the other city, among the, the city workers, those, I think, those are more important issues, I think, where the other city is concerned, and where the council is concerned. I think those, those are more important issues, more so than term limits.
Okay, thank you. Next question is from Steve Foot.
The council's explored using the MWRA as a secondary water source, and found that it's extremely costly. Would you be in favor, would you support the mayor's proposals to buy the Aquaria Water Facility and cure Brockton's water compliance problem?
Marlin first.
No, I would not support the, the purchase of the desal plant, and I would not do that for a number of reasons. Number one, it is a failing business. From the beginning, it's been a failing business, and I do not agree with our city purchasing a failing business without a comprehensive business plan to turn this plant around. There are a number of questions where the plant is concerned. How much is, is it going to cost the city to operate on a annual basis? How much is it going to cost us to, to upgrade this plant? How are we going to market this plant, and, and to get the customer base, so that this business is profitable, and we're not stuck with a failing business? So, I would not support that at all. I know it's been stated that buying into the, the MWRA is expensive. How much more expensive is it for the other city? This desaled plant has been around for many, many years, and we've been going back and forth with this, and I think the time is now for us to put that to rest. No on the, on the other plant.
Dennis?
Well, we just had the MWRA before us not too long ago, just a few weeks ago, just for an informational session, but, I mean, I have to follow the steps, I, I guess I have to say it, but I have to follow the steps of what Reverend Green is saying, because, you know, when and if it comes to the city council, it comes before me, I, I have no intentions at this particular time of voting in favor to buy, you know, the desalination plant. First of all, the taxpayer's already paying enough with it. So, with that being said, and I know we're paying enough of a tough bill right now, I'd rather just be, keep paying the tough bill, get over with the contract we're with, and, and then we'd be done with it, because if not, you're gonna have to go out to bond for, we say, 78 million, but probably by the time you're figuring all the other costs, you're probably gonna go out to bond for about $108 million, and, and what we're gonna have is a $1.7 million savings? And, and the mayor makes that sound good? Of course it sounds good, because he likes to spend money, and he needs the $1.7 million to spend it in some other area. And then, for me, I just, I'm not gonna put it to the taxpayers again, they went through it before I became a councillor, that was a big issue, just when I went on the council, that was just an ending issue about the situation we're in, and I cannot foresee myself even going forth with something like that, it's ludicrous. To me, it is anyways.
Tina?
I'd have to agree with the reverend and councillor Ineri on that. My other concern is for safety. Again, being a nurse, I have safety concerns, environmental, safety concerns when it comes to, to that, so I'd have to say no, that I wouldn't be for a power plant right now.
Okay, thank you. We don't have time for my favorite question, but we need to go to closing statements at this point in time, and the order that was drawn was this, Tina would be first, you have up to two minutes.
Okay. So, again, my name is Tina Cardoso, I am a nurse by trade, I am a leader in the community, I'm the president of a nonprofit organization that seeks to help folks in the community and educate them around mental illness. I raised three beautiful kids here in Brockton, who all went on to do well, my oldest is getting her PhD right now, my second daughter is a teacher in Boston. I care about the city, I want to help out my folks, I want to be that council that's visible, I'm approachable, I'm someone that folks can relate to. I have much, I don't have experience as a politician, but I have life experience to offer the people in my ward, and I will do the best I can to deal with those issues that the people in Ward Three care about, like public safety and education, and just be available for folks, to educate them on what the issues are in the city.
Thank you, Tina. Next Reverend Green?
Hi, I'm Reverend Green, Marlin Green, and again, I have the honor of being a candidate for city council to represent Ward Three. I've lived in the city for 15 years, my wife and I are raising our two boys, eight and 11-years-old, and they're both students in the Brockton Public Schools, of which we are extremely proud of. I'm an immigrant, I'm originally from Jamaica, moved to Boston, and then moved to Brockton 15 years ago with my family. I chose Brockton to be my home, and I'm 100% vested in making Brockton a better city for my sons, for your sons, and your daughters as well. I bring 15 years of church ministry experience, and throughout those 15 years, I've had the wonderful opportunity of working in several different communities across New England, bringing people, families, community groups, and churches together at the table for the enrichment and the empowerment of our young people. And I hope to bring that experience and that skillset to the city council to better serve you and your families in Ward Three. I also have 15 years of experience in research in the healthcare industry, and managing multimillion-dollar research budgets. I hope to bring the experience and the skillset of doing due diligence, careful research, and employing a evidence-based approach to problem-solving. I hope to bring that to the city council, to help to make our city our home. I encourage you to join me on September 19th, and let's vote and make Ward Three go green again, I'm number one on the ballot.
Thank you. And councillor Ineri?
Thank you, thank you, Mark, and again, I want to thank BCA, BCA and the staff here for hosting this this evening, I want to thank Steve, who's one of our persons answering the question, and I want to thank my councillor, Shayna Barnes, for being a part of the process, but I also want to thank her for her years of service. We appreciate what you've done as a city councillor, you've done an awful lot, you should be proud of the fact that, I know you're moving on, and I hope your endeavors are, this is challenging, Shayna, I really do, but I wish you the very, very best of luck, so, best to you. Again, my name's Dennis Ineri, city councillor of Ward Three, have been for the last 14 years, and I'm proud of it. I've served the people of Ward Three for, for those 14 years, and have always been available to the people of this ward. I don't know of any time when I was never available. I'm out there, morning, day, and night, to the left and the right of me, don't realize, and Shayna knows, what it is to be a city councillor. As I keep saying, it's a part-time job, part-time pay, 24/7. I want to see how they perform the first time, when the phone call comes in at 1:00 in the morning, when you got a constituent saying, I got a noisy neighborhood, how do you like sleeping, and I can't? You have to get up, and you have to do something about it. Those are the things that you do as a ward councillor, those are the things that I've been doing for the last 14 years, those are the things that I will continue to do for the next 14 years. Now, I know there's some people in the city that like to see me gone, and I know there's particular people that have already made their choice of who should be the next Ward Three councillor. It's not gonna be, it will be me, because I will be out there working hard and diligently for the next few days. I need votes for September 19th, I'll get my votes for November 7th, and I will continue to represent the people of Ward Three the way I've endured it, to the very best of my ability. And I can't say enough about the people of Ward Three, hadn't been born there, come back here, worked with them, it's a tremendous, tremendous ward, it really is. So, with that being said, please, September 19th, Tuesday, that's primary day, election starts at 7:00 in the morning, closes at 8:00. I asked the voters, that have voted for me for the last 14 years, to please come out and renominate me. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you to all three candidates?
Thank you.
For being here. We're gonna keep everybody in their place. I want to thank my panelists, Steve Foot and Shayna Barnes, and again, thank you Shayna for your service, thank my staff and crew, but most of all, September 19th, we do not want a repeat of what happened in past years, we do not want 4%, 5%, 10%, we want to show Brockton pride, we want everybody to go out and vote for the city councils, three races that are out there, the mayor's race, and then we'll get to councillor-at-large and other ward races for the November 7th election. So, keep tuned to Brockton Community Access, channels 9, 12, and 98, but most of all, do your duty and vote. Good night.